Good evening. I'd like to start the town council meeting of January 11th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I just want to initially start this meeting by saying that Chair Rothaus has been excused for this evening. So I'll be doing the chair. Announcements. The town hall offices will be closed on Monday, January 15th, for the observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. The upcoming town council meetings. There are two budget meetings. First one Wednesday, January 17th at 6:30, and Thursday, January 18th, also at 6:30. And the next council meeting is Thursday, January 15th, I'm sorry, 25th, at 7:00 P.M. Okay, any comments from the press or public saying no rush? There are no recognitions, resignations, or retirements, nor appointments, nor public hearing. Do you have announcements?
I'll just do them on the town.
You want to do it at the town?
Town manager's report.
Any legislative updates from state reps?
Yes.
Yes? Nancy, go ahead.
Bye. Thank you. Thought I had a couple more minutes.
I can give you a minute. You wanted to wait until after announcements to catch your breath?
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Get organized, sorry.
That's fine with me. Town managers' report. Nancy, you can do it after this. How's that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple. Registration is now open for the Parks and Rec Department's summer day camp programs. Complete details can be found on their website at www.merrimackparks, with an S, and rec.org. That's Merrimackparksandrec.org. The new transfer stickers for 2024 are now out. They could be obtained at the transfer station office, or downstairs at town hall in the DPW administrative office, Monday through Friday, in the DPW administration office, sorry, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30, and at the transfer station when they're open. We kind of touched base on this last night, with the way February plays out with meeting schedule. So February 8th is a regularly scheduled town council meeting. February 13th is the last day to file petition warrant articles and ratify union contracts. And then we have February 15th is the public hearing for the budget. We also have a regularly scheduled meeting on the 22nd of February. My suggestion to the council would be that we hold the February 8th meeting, and we have the hold the February 15th meeting while that's the budget public hearing. We also use that as the regular council meeting, because in that two weeks period, we can meet three times. So it doesn't make sense to have another meeting in the following week. So that would be my recommendation, is to move the regularly scheduled council meeting on the 22nd to the 15th as well.
Do you just need a consensus or a vote?
I think, because the way it states, a vote would be, just do a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move our February 22nd meeting to February 18th, February 15th.
I'll make a second.
Motion made by Tom Candy, second by Mackenzie. Any discussion?
Nope.
Any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. 6-0-0. That's all. So we're all set with that?
We're all set with that. That's all that I have, but I do want to just bring a couple of dates, in case you didn't watch last night's budget hearing. I'll repeat these over and over again. If you're planning on filing a petition bond, the petition bond needs to be in the town manager's office by the 9th of February with the required number of signatures. If you're planning on filing a petition warrant article, that needs to be in the town manager's office by the 13th of February, Tuesday, the 13th of February, with the recommended total number of signatures that are needed in each case.
And if people don't know the amount of signatures they need, they should contact the town manager's office?
Yes, contact the town manager's office. It's also Section 10 of the Town Charter, Chapter 10. But seriously, if you don't know what you need, call the town manager's office, because Chapter 10 can be very confusing to people. So yes, they can call the town manager's office.
Thank you. All set, Paul?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Nancy, are you all ready?
Sure, thank you, sorry.
Legislative update?
This is great. Yeah, it was a little, it's a little busier than usual, and so I spent a little time going over the bills that affect Merrimack or were filed by reps here and voted on by Merrimack reps. On the 9th, Representative Healy sponsored a bill, HB 1191, that was cosponsored by Senator Chanley, Representatives Mooney, Rung, and myself. It was before Ways and Means, and it was relative to the establishment of an exemption to the meals room tax, meals and rooms tax for participants in the restaurant voucher program. And Representative Rung, myself testified in support, and Town Councilor Healy signed in in support. We're hopeful that that gets some support in the Senate and gets out of there so we can get over to the House. And it's a great bill, and I certainly hope that we'll see forward movement on that. The next two bills were heard the same day. These were all on the 9th, but these are two Senate bills, both important to our community and specific to our community. Senate Bill 511 was the prime sponsor, and that is Senator Chanley. And the cosponsors are Representatives Healy, Murphy, myself, Rung, and Thomas. That's before Senate Transportation. And this is a bill that came about, given the concerns that anybody that's been paying attention to the issues the MBD is having with road salt and the contamination of the wells, sodium chloride levels are extremely, exorbitantly high. And so this bill specifies that salt application requirements and procedures for the Department of Transportation in the town of Merrimack, in that area, the Continental Boulevard, Industrial Drive area, given the long-term excessive use of salt on Merrimack roads, the sodium and chloride levels measured in the local groundwater resources continue to rise and have elevated, have become elevated to historic levels over the past several years. This is not only a public health hazard, but it's caused substantial harm to the MBD, actually necessitating that they shut down, take off well number three, and had to replace it with well number nine, and it cost about $2 million. This legislation was necessary because we've not had success with discussions with the DOT as to asking that only DOT trucks using brine support that area. And it's been a real, a real problem. And I know I testified that the cost, we are already a PFAS-impacted town, so we have those contaminants compounded by this, and we said, you know, we're victims. You know, we've had St. Gobain pollution, and now we have the state of New Hampshire contaminating.
What does the bill say?
It, what it does is it prescribes what, how the Department of Transportation is to treat the roads.
Very specifically.
Very specifically. And the only, that was, that bill testifying in support physically there was Dodge Prevention Chair of the Merrimack Village District Board of Commissioners, Wolfren Bunshon, also a member of the MBD Board of Commissioners, Senator Chanley, Representatives Boyd, myself, and Representative Rung. And then in signatures in support, Representatives Healy, Mooney, and Nodder, Town Councilor Barbara Healy, Ron Minor was present there too and signed in in support. And Jamie Emery, who is a hydrogeologist and actually is a consultant for the MBD, presented testimony, and I read it into the record. So it's really, really important legislation, and I was really grateful to Senator Chanley for filing it, because our filing period had closed when we were finally able to get all this in place. So I know the Department of Transportation would like this not to have been filed, but we just have no other options. We've asked nicely for a really long time, and it's costing us. I said, we're, you know, we need some recourse. The next bill was Senate Bill 466. Again, Senator Chanley filed this. The cosponsors are Representative Boyd, myself, Representative Rung, and Thomas. It went, was heard in Senate Transportation, and this is enabling legislation. It was filed by Senator Chanley in response to the citizen request and concerns voiced at a public meeting that Senator Chanley organized and held here at the town council, at the town hall, with the DOT back, I know, a couple of months ago, I think, to discuss the Everett Turnpike Widening Project, impacted residents along that area. We're really frustrated by the inability or refusal of the DOT to install sound barriers near their homes. So Senator Chanley said, you know, admittedly, this bill is not perfect, but it's a bill that proposes an option to making sound barriers available to impacted residents by allowing the DOT to erect them upon the request of municipalities. This bill would create two programs for the construction of noise barriers. One, a program using federal highway money for 70% of the barrier, 70% of the cost of the barrier, and the other, a state matching grant program using general fund money for 70% of the cost of the barrier. Any municipality requesting a sound barrier would be required to fund that additional 30%. And the municipalities would be eligible for the state matching grant programs without meeting a cost per receptor threshold. And Senator Chanley, Representatives Boyd, myself, Rung, and Chair Prevention from the MBD testified and signed in in support of this bill. And also signing in support online were Representatives Healy, Mooney, and Thomas, and Town Councilor Barbara Healy. And the only opposition to this was Representative Nodder. Two other bills, I don't have the complete list of who signed in in support, but one of the bills would be House Bill 1649, and that's a PFAS bill. And that was heard in Commerce and Consumer Affairs on Tuesday afternoon. And it's relative to prohibiting certain products with intentionally added PFAS. That bill remarkably, I think back, and I actually remarked to some people that were there, you know, seven years ago, we were fighting a very lonely battle. And on this day, it was really compelling to see the number of people that showed up, and the Conservation Law Foundation showed up with a list of all of the people in support. Sierra Club, they just went on. And Waste Management came and supported and said, it was a great explanation that I think helped people that may not understand how dangerous this stuff is. And he said, he said, if you take Lake Winnipesaukee, think of the size of Lake Winnipesaukee, and he said, you put one cup of resolved carpet cleaner, that everybody has in their house, he goes, one cup of resolved carpet cleaner in Lake Winnipesaukee would deem it, it was not drinkable, was not drinkable. So he said, look at the small amount, and we know. So that stuck, I think, with a lot of people. And I know we had a number, a number of meetings over the summer with DES. And DES didn't take a position, but they were very supportive and helpful during the hearing as well, saying that the only way that we're going to keep it out of our waste systems, keep it out of our landfills, is to eliminate it in commerce where we can. And this was part of the new MOA legislation that multiple states are working on just to try to protect our land and public health, especially in communities like ours where we're already so exposed. So that bill, if I recall, yes, there were only two people that opposed it. And one was a lobbyist for the American Chemistry Council, and the other one was a gentleman that none of us had ever seen before, who said he's been working for a really long time on PFAS, and we don't know with who, but, but he was the only other person opposing it. So it was pretty, pretty wild that that was, you know, we had that much support. So really hoping that, you know, people still, this is going to go to a subcommittee, that anybody wanted to just write a letter to, who is it, Commerce, and say how important this is, especially to our community. I think it'd be really important for them to hear from us. And then the other bill that I'll mention was, actually was one of my bills. It was a, I don't even know the number, oh, House Bill 1393, that went before Health and Human Services yesterday. And a former resident, Amy Mendez, used to live here in Merrimack, and many people will remember Mighty Max, who we saw all on social media, was a little boy in our community who was diagnosed with cancer. He's now 14, and they've moved to Nashua. But Amy had reached out to me and said, she looked at our state health improvement plan and our cancer plan, and there's no mention of pediatric cancer. And we are number one in the nation for pediatric cancer. We have about 100 children in New Hampshire right now that have childhood cancer. And, you know, Amy had suggested, you know, that what we don't, we think of the diagnosis, but we don't think of all the sequelae, you know, and she explained, Max is 14, has glaucoma, and a number of cataracts and other things that people don't think of. So the treatment that these children need to keep them alive also leaves them with some really long-term impacts. So we really want to prioritize and have that addressed. That again got great support. The challenge with that bill might be that it would be the only health diagnosis that we would be asking to prioritize in this health plan. And I don't think anybody thinks it's inappropriate, but the concern is that if we mention pediatric cancer, well, what about, they're afraid they might get bills for medical marijuana or PFAS or whatever. So I think if it doesn't pass as itself, it's, Health and Human Services was great to work with, and they really want that to be addressed as well. So if it doesn't pass by way of legislation, it will certainly become part of a working group, maybe with DHHS to make that happen. And I think, sorry, I've taken so long, but there was just so much this first week. Oh, and the last one that I mentioned that I think is important to us too was Representative Chuck Grassi's bill, HB 1068, that was also yesterday before Health and Human Services, just before my pediatric cancer. And myself, Representative Thomas, and Representative Rung are cosponsors of that. And it's the bill I had last time that we passed through the House and Senate, but the governor vetoed it. And that was relative to blood testing for children. And we're not going to give up. It's back. So it's the same bill, just, it's not requiring any new blood testing, but given we've found in Merrimack schools, we've found lead. Lead, right. And anybody knows lead's a neurotoxin and has long-term and lifelong, you know, neurodevelopmental implications for kids, and that causes increases in special ed funding, costs in schools, and never mind the impact to children. So anyway, that's this week. And the next week, the only thing I would ask, I'll probably put something out on social media, is we are trying to reestablish the Commission on Environmentally Trigged Chronic Disease or Illness. And that is a bill that, especially since we have the kidney cancer incidents here, we really want to even monitor that through that commission too. So I'll be asking for people to just please sign in, support. If the state doesn't hear from our community, they wonder, like, if you guys don't take it seriously, why should we?
That's the 37?
That one's the week after, I think. So I have both of the commissions. This one is, this used to be the SB 85.
Oh, okay.
So I don't even know what number it is, but I'll get it out there. So thank you. Sorry for the long thing, but. It was, yeah. It'll slow down, hopefully.
A little while. You still have, yeah, the rest of the month.
How much in one week?
Exactly. Okay, there is no consent agenda, nor o business. So we'll start with a new business, number one, Presidential Primary Election Assignment Discussion.
So in years past, we've had councilors go to certain locations. And since Mackenzie's new to the council, and this will be really her first election, congratulations. You picked a good one. So what I wanted to run by the council is that Finley said that, Chairman Rothaus said that he would be the floater for the day.
Yeah.
St. John Newman would be Councilor Koenig, and Council, Vice Chairman Harrington.
Yeah.
The middle school is a change, would be Councilor Healy, and because you live out that way, I thought it would be good for you, you might want to be in the middle school for the election. Councilor Hunter?
Makes no difference to me.
All right, so you'll be at the middle school, and then we'll put both councilors, Murphy and Murphy, at the JMU's upper elementary school. Try to get people as close to their polling locations as possible. I know, Councilor Healy, that is not your polling location, but it's close on that. I know you like being up there.
I know that game.
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna miss me, Barbara. Barbara and I have always had tag team to each other.
So the only thing that I've asked is that if you're going to step out or if you're going to not be in the location, that you have somebody appointed to be your delegate in case the state comes in, so they can point and say, yep, there's the two councilors, there's your delegate.
And that's nothing new.
And that's nothing new, but, you know, it's up to the councilors to appoint their delegate. The other thing is.
Yes and no.
Yeah.
Isn't that, okay.
Okay, you go ahead.
There has to be communication between councilors and the town people there.
Yes.
So that they know who the designate is.
Right.
And sometimes there's discussion among the people who are there. But you're right in terms of, before you leave, there has to be clarity as to one of the, at least one of the councilors there, and the designate is made clear.
Right, exactly. So that they all know. You're right. It's going to be a very long day and night for the council. With a name that is not on the ballot, there might be a lot more write-ins than normal. If it's just that one person, those write-ins should be put in a pile and be able to count. But if you have other write-ins, it might take longer. The council was required to sign off on every box. So I know you're going to be there from 7:00 to 7:00. It might look like we're going to be, you're going to be there a little bit later in JMU's to sign these, sign these boxes. So plan accordingly, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Is that it's going to be a very, very long day for everybody.
Nancy, Nancy Murphy, have you been at JMU's before?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're familiar with the volume of people that go through there and stuff? Because that's, that's one of the very busiest places. So the two of you are going to be busy with all that good stuff.
I miss my friend Andy though.
It's going to be interesting to see what the volume is. I know it's, because there's no Democratic, you know, lineup. It's Republican.
There are people on the ballot, and then they're pushing the absentee ballot or the write-in.
Write-in, exactly. So that's what you're talking about.
Right.
And those have to be hand counted.
See what numbers are out, is my point. Yeah. And they have to be hand counted as well. So it's going to be a long, it's just going to be a long day for the seven councilors from 7:00 to 7:00. So if you can find a delegate around lunchtime or something to take a break, please do. Because I don't know how long we'll be there on the back end that night, Tuesday night, to wait for signing.
Are you working? Working, working?
My phone?
I took a vacation day that day. I'll be there.
Me too. And Lynn knows, Lynn knows your, Lynn knows your assignments, so.
Yeah.
And if there's any special arrangements, I mean, Barbara and I always made arrangements, so Tom, if there are issues, you and I will speak. So you just make arrangements, you know, talk among yourselves, and, right? It's always seemed to work out that way.
Generally, the state comes by in the morning, before noon.
Yeah, just.
Thinking that they might come by other times, or? No telling.
No telling with.
They're going to leave us alone this time.
You know, but, but you might have other people going through too. Not just, you know, the Secretary of State. It might be the.
Observers.
Observers coming through and asking questions.
We need to be aware of what the rules are, the lines that people need to stay behind, the observers and all need to stay behind the lines.
And that's up to the moderator to enforce those, and they've been trained.
Thank you.
Yes, you're right. There are lines that where you can't come across, and the moderators have been trained. Lynn had a session on Tuesday night with all election workers and explained the rules, but those are the ones.
I'm a little surprised she's not here tonight.
I am too. She knew about this, so I'm a little surprised, but, you know, it's.
But I also expect there'll be a lot of people, independents coming in, needing to swap back. So we may end up having to man that desk as well to sign people back to whatever, independent or whatever. So just be prepared to be flexible.
We always have been.
Well, I know. I'm just saying that for the benefits of new people, but trying not to point out the new people.
Yeah, we kept busy, that's for sure.
Yes.
Which beats sitting around doing nothing.
No, I agree.
I mean, I'd much rather be busy than twiddling my thumb for 12 hours. Well, that's, that's a whole different story. Anyway.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Number two, Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund Withdrawal Request, submitted by Chief Mark Difonzo, who's here. The town council to consider a request to withdraw up to $20,000 from the Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund to purchase IP ad. Oh, iPad. It didn't look right, did it?
Nope.
You know, the day continues. At least I can laugh at myself. To purchase iPad devices, mounting equipment, related equipment. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Counsel for entertaining this agenda item. This is actually a leftover from a period of time before I got here as the chief of department in November 21. So as the council is aware, the town chose a particular software company to manage all the public safety information for police and fire. And some of that also included computer aided dispatch along with mobile data terminal information so that those emergency vehicles out on the roadway would have the ability to get information quickly and efficiently. Part of that project was also to purchase the tablets to go along with that information system. When we first went to CSI, they told us it was a very heavy Microsoft-based system, so we had to purchase Microsoft-type equipment. So we purchased a couple of Surface Pros to try them out, to see if we would like them. None of us had ever used a Surface Pro before, so it was a learning curve for us to figure out how that device worked. It was a struggle, not only for the technology in that device, but also the communication, the infrastructure for the network, the cellular connection to get information back and forth. So we had a lot of struggle with it. Over time, CSI was able to get their applications to work on iPad equipment, which we were very familiar with since our EMS folks have been using iPads for a very long time doing attempts to assist reports, and we're very comfortable with that type of equipment. So we opted to move to the iPad equipment. And then we also ran some testing with a different cellular provider and found much better connectivity with a different provider. So over those past year or so, that was what we were working on to figure out what would be the best purchase for us. So when we were ready to purchase the equipment, everybody assumed that this, from being 2021, Capital Reserve Fund had already been requested. Well, no, it never did. So when we were ready to purchase, we couldn't. So we had to put this memo together for you folks to approve the purchase up to the $20,000, which was originally assigned and allotted back in the capital improvement plan for 2021. So that's why I'm here tonight, asking for those funds. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
So there's funding in the capital equipment plan for?
Yeah, Fire Capital, yeah, we have the money set aside in the CRF for this.
How many iPads are you going to get for $20,000?
Well, it's also to include the mounting bracket systems. So some of that mounting bracket systems gets to be a little expensive. So the iPads are running about $1,200 apiece, sometimes 13. And then the mounting bracket systems, depending upon the piece of equipment it could go into, could be almost $2,000 to $2,500 to make it all work and mount so that it doesn't. Oh, yeah, no, the mounting systems are crazy. So like everything else, so.
So these, these become mounted in the fire truck?
Yes, but they're removable if the provider needs to take it out of the piece of equipment, correct? Yes. We will purchase as many as we can, because we'd like to have a few spares. So if a device fails, we have a replacement to put in its place.
And iPad makes that big a difference, you're saying? Because they're usually quite expensive compared to other.
Actually, the cost between the Surface Pro and the iPad were pretty much equal.
Is that right?
Yep, but since the staff was more comfortable using the iPad equipment, we felt, why, and then now we're also consistent with all of our equipment in the building. So there's no learning curve. There's no, well, the Surface Pro, you need to do this. The iPad, you need to do that. So we're trying to, you know, standardize what it is that we do for equipment.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Anyone wanna make a motion?
Sure. I move to approve the request to withdraw up to twenty thousand dollars from the Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund to purchase iPad devices, mounting equipment, and other related equipment, and for the town manager to have authority to sign all necessary paperwork.
And I'll make a second.
Okay, the motion made by Barbara Healy, seconded by Mackenzie Murphy. Any other discussion? Do you have to do the expend thing? Or is what was written, withdraw and expend?
Was she, she included that in the motion?
She did.
Yeah, I missed. To authorize the town manager to sign anything.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, saying none, six, zero, zero.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Enjoy the evening.
Thank you, Chief.
You too.
Third item, Computer Capital Reserve Fund Withdrawal Request. Town Council to consider a request to withdraw up to forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars from the Computer Capital Reserve Fund for upgrading the current exchange server. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Currently, our micros, our server exchange is at end of life. Microsoft is not going to provide any more updates, which, as you know, provides a significant risk to the town of Merrimack and the email system. Given the current threat and landscape, it's highly recommended that we upgrade to the current exchange environment. When we looked at our upgrade options, we have two options, really, we have three options, but two of them are pretty much the same. The first is to go with cloud or three sixty-five, but the cost to go there with our current landscape of our emails is about sixty-three thousand dollars a year, and that's a yearly cost. Or the other option was to u- upgrade Exchange to two thousand nineteen Exchange, with no software assurance, and software assurance is, is that if they continue to upgrade their, to the next version of Exchange, we get, it's a free upgrade for us. And there appears that there might be another upgrade for what the chatter is on Microsoft Exchange. And the differences between twenty-six thousand, say four hundred, or with no software assurance, to forty-four thousand, three ninety-seven with software assurance. This will also give us, or we're recommending to go with the upgrade on-premise Exchange with software assurance. And this will give us some more time to work on reducing the number of mailboxes and reducing the mailbox landscapes to get it ready that if we do wanna go to three sixty-five, when in two thou-, it's roughly, they say in October two thousand twenty-five, but they're thinking they're gonna extend that, we can actually go to Microsoft three sixty-five and we can run this exchange like we've had in the past six or seven more years. So we just don't have to do it at two thousand five, because usually when they, when they come up with a product, they end up life it and we run it basically to the end of life, which we have done, because when I first got here, when we went to Exchange, we ran two thousand and three until two thousand ten, eleven, and then we went to thirteen for the last ten years, so we're upgrading to nineteen right now with this. And Jonathan feels comfortable, um, in his words, spinning up another Exchange server and keeping it on site, uh, because there's been a lot of vulnerability in targeting of the Microsoft Cloud with these bigger accounts and especially in governmental accounts. So right now, he feels more comfortable keeping it in-house for the next three to five years.
Computer-wise people have questions?
Well, I was gonna ask, maybe that's me, but anyway, I was gonna ask you, is this beyond one year? Is this an annual thing, or is this a one-time charge?
One-time purchase if we go with the upgrading our server.
And the software assurance goes as long as we have this?
Yes.
That we're operating, so it's a one-time charge for probably three years, two, three years?
Three, five years, whatever it is, it's a one-time charge.
And there's a really good chance there would be a software upgrade in between here and twenty-five or twenty-six, yeah.
Cause Microsoft's getting a lot of pushback on three sixty-five by the bigger clients. Not us, but we-
Yeah. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm good.
Barbara?
So, Paul, you may or may not know this, um, that's a new box. So is that new box gonna fit in the existing rack? Or are they gonna have to purchase a new rack?
Nope, it will fit in, we, we've-
Oh, you measured, huh?
Yeah, we upgraded our racks, yes.
Okay.
Good question. Any other questions?
No.
Saying none. I would listen to you say, I wouldn't even know. Go right ahead.
Uh, I move to request, um, approval of withdrawal of up to forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars from the Computer Capital Reserve Fund for upgrading the current Exchange server and for the town manager to have authorization to sign any and all necessary documents.
Nancy Murphy made the motion, seconded by Barbara Healy. Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, six, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Okay, number four, Communication, Communications Capital Reserve Fund Withdrawal Request. Town Council to consider a request to withdraw up to, withdraw up to twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars from the Communications Capital Reserve Fund replacement of the alarm monitoring system at the Police Dispatch Center.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Currently, the alarm monitoring system that we have is old, it's obsolete. It's no longer supported by the manufacturer. Um, it relies solely on copper technology for its lines, and those have been lately unreliable, um, going in and out of, of the police station as well as throughout. What, what this, what this does is that if their fire alarm goes off in the, any town building, meaning a school or a town building, the highway garage, wastewater treatment, fire, wherever, it goes to dispatch and on their monitors, it brings up a, a, a signal to them to say, hey, there's an alarm going off on this building, dispatch fire. Dispatch police to the, to the units. What's happening is because this is old and obsolete, sometimes it hits, sometimes it doesn't. We had an incident with the J Mews Upper Elementary School that a fire alarm was going off. The signal didn't even go across the street, it failed. And there was backups that were in place that that woman wasn't there and somebody else had a call, and that's an issue that the fire department has taken up with the school, and they have rectified a solution to that. During that process, we were looking at, there's companies out there that monitor alarms all the time. And we were looking at, well, what's the price per line, how many lines do we have? And we're doing our due diligence. Well, it came out that it would cost us about twenty-one thousand dollars a year to monitor all the buildings and that town buildings with this, because there's a monthly speed going forward. Jonathan did the research on this. And to buy this new piece of equipment that we need in dispatch, this new server, was only gonna be about twenty-eight thousand dollars. So the payback was less than a year and a half, it's a year, a year and four months roughly. So we decided to buy this piece of equipment and we will run it with, with all its updates and everything for the next several years. Like I said, this piece of equipment that we have is probably, at least, it's never been replaced since I've been here, so it's at least eighteen or plus years old. And this is when, way back when, we used to do a lot more alarm monitoring for-
Cause we used, we used to do the alarm.
We used to do the alarm monitoring for corporates and stuff, and then we got out of that game, and by getting out of that game, we didn't upgrade, we didn't upgrade the system, and we said, this will be suffice, and we've been saving up for this, this changeover, and it'll help with our alarm monitoring and our, um, and our, we have, uh, panic alarms strategically located throughout Town Hall. And now I'll help with that as well, going over to dispatch on a quicker, and since we're going over to fiber and IP, this system will be able to integrate the fiber and IP to make the signal even quicker, back and forth.
I remember the decision was, we had private. Alarms going in, residences, yeah.
Pet peeve of Tom Mayhoun.
Yeah. Barbara?
So just a question, um, will the equipment that's being used by the school department, will it merge with what you're buying here?
Yes, because-
Cause it sounds like the town equipment will, but-
The school will too. Jonathan's been working with the school district on their alarm dialers and their alarm panels as well, uh, for the last couple of months, six or eight months now, Chief. So Jonathan's been working with the school, and, and these are one of the problems that we found that their dialers are dialing and it's, it's the server. They, they track it to the server and the server's not saying, here you go, so it will back.
Any other questions? Saying none. Nancy?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I move to, uh, request approval to withdraw up to twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars from the Communications Capital Reserve Fund replacement, for replacement of the alarm monitoring system at the Police Dispatch Center, and for the town manager to have authorization to sign, um, all necessary documents.
I'll make a second.
Motion made by Nancy Murphy, seconded by Mackenzie Murphy.
Can you, can you modify that to, by the moving to request approval to moving to approve? Okay, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying none, six, zero, zero. Number five, sponsorship donation of Parks and Recreation Department Summer Concert Series. Isn't it nice to think of summer concert? At least we're not the middle of the country that's below zero, anyway. The Town Council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation from Franklin Savings Bank. They're the adder again, they're doing a lot of that. In the amount of nine hundred dollars for the Parks and Recreation Department to be used towards the summer concert series pursuant to Charter Article eight dash fifteen and RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B. And Matt Scott here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll go right in. There are a lot of people tonight.
Yes, I'm wearing a lot of different hats. Just wanna thank Franklin Savings Bank. They definitely have stepped up in, not just with the town, but a lot of different organizations in town.
You were gonna look into plaques of those.
And that's one of the things that I was gonna ask in the motion with the council, if, if so deemed to, um, if we haven't given Franklin Savings plaque, a plaque, to provide a plaque for them, and we bring them in, um, at that, but it, the donation speaks for itself.
But they've really been picking up a lot.
Picking up time and time again, yep.
So, so part of the motion should be to provide an appreciation plaque?
If, yes.
If, if we decide to.
Yes, if.
Okay.
If we haven't.
If they have not received one yet, okay. Okay, any questions? It's pretty self-explanatory, I suppose. And acknowledging that we've, at least I've noticed, they've really come up recently with a lot of. Okay, no discussion? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll see if I can word it. I move to, uh, accept and expend a donation from Franklin Savings Bank in the amount of nine hundred dollars for the Parks and Rec Department to be used towards a summer concert series pursuant to Charter Article eight and RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B. And authorize the town manager to, uh, sign for any, any authorization necessary and, um, recommend that we send a plaque to, of appreciation to Franklin Savings Bank if it has not already been done, so.
Thank you, second.
Okay, motion by Tom Kinnick, seconded by Barbara Healy. Any further discussion? Saying none, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, six, zero, zero. Okay, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand thirty, Capital Improvements Program Discussion. The Town Council to approve the twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty CIP with Planning Board recommendations. Now, we've all received, we've previously reviewed this.
Right.
Then it went to the Planning Board and they've provided their recommendations.
On the major projects.
On major projects, alright, that's correct.
So, when I presented this back in November to the Town Council, Town Council asked me to bring back the, um, the CIP with the, uh, recommendations from the planning boards. There was no surprises in, in what they were saying that we needed. There was nothing that they said that really the Town Council should change their priority or move things forward. They listed their, most of them are necessary, there was a couple of urgents and a couple of desirables. And I'm just coming forward that you accept, um, the plan, um-
Final approval?
Final approval of the plan.
Okay, so we need a motion to, for final approval of the plan as presented this evening? Right?
Yes.
After Planning Board review?
Yeah, you did.
Anybody?
So moved.
Motion made by Nancy Murphy, seconded by-
I'll make a second.
Mackenzie Murphy.
You almost got it.
Yes, Barbara.
Madam Chair, should I vote on this, or should I step back from it? Because I voted on it for the Planning Board, so.
I don't think there's any conflict, right?
No, you're just voting on a-
I would think you're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, just making sure.
Cause it's not a deliberative deliberation regarding, uh-
Right, exactly.
Motion, yeah, action.
Actually, this is just our capital plan, and as you know, the council, we come before you to withdraw the money out of this plan at that time. It's just, it, it lends to the Planning Board saying what is really urgent versus-
Expressing their opinion about it.
Expressing their opinion about it.
I would rather just have people say, why did she even worry about that? Versus, why did she vote on it?
No, I agree, I agree. Okay, the motion's been made for full approval. No other discussion, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Saying none, six, zero, zero. Okay, submitted, uh, by Town Manager, consideration of the acceptance of donated land. The Town Council to consider the acceptance of a donation of land known as Tax Map six E slash zero zero eight to the town of Merrimack pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash E and Charter Article eight dash fifteen. And we're all looking at a map now.
Yeah, I thought it would be easier to bring it up on the map.
Yeah.
I wanted to get in and actually show you some things, but our GIS is acting a little nutty tonight, must be the weather.
That's good.
Good thing she did shut the lights all off, you would be asleep in two minutes. I've been approached by the owners of this parcel. Mid Coast Ventures LLC. They own the property to the west going up to DW Highway. They own a little bit of tract of land, it's point eight acres, it sits on the Merrimack River. They've offered it to the town at no cost. In doing our research, whoops, um, zoom out. In doing our research, the property that, just to the north of us here is owned by the railroad. The railroad owns a big swath of land, swath of land that in between the railroad and the river going down. As we move southerly, the town of Merrimack owns the purse, parcel just adjacent to this point eight acres as well. And then as we keep on going down southerly, Boston, Maine is in between the town of Merrimack and the town of Merrimack parcel, which is almost eight acres of land. So we own a lot of the riverfront property in this section along with the railroad, Boston, Maine Railroad. Even if we go down a little bit further, there's this little island, and we own that as well. So basically, from Gilbert Crossing all the way up to the gas station, for those people who travel DW, would be on the other side of, of railroad tracks, would either be the town of Merrimack or the railroad. This company is offering us the property for, no, just as a donation to the town of Merrimack. It's valued on our books, about sixteen thousand dollars. Brings in about three hundred and twenty dollars on the new tax rate of the property tax revenue. So if this property does, if we do, if the Town Council ceases to accept it, it's not gonna be a financial burden on the town.
There's really no pro or con to it, I mean, we don't have access to it. Cause you, we don't have-
You gotta cross the railroad tracks.
Can't go over the railroad tracks. You could get there by boat.
Right.
Clearly. But there's real, yeah, so six, one, half dozen of them.
Right.
There's nothing against it, there's nothing for it, it's just-
It's kinda like that island that we own, it's, you can't get there unless you're- It's, you can't get there unless you're in a boat.
That's intriguing, though.
So I, I guess from my perspective, just having the town be able to control or say they have control of as much of the riverbank as possible has some merit to it. Between us and Boston and Maine, we own, you know, a large chunk along that side of the river and, and therefore have some semblance of control, although you could argue there's no control. But should anything ever happen in the future with Boston and Maine, chances are we could acquire and access all of that, which would be nice. But it could be any amount of time in the future. But now, it's an opportunity. The company can't use it, they're, so it really is of zero value to them. Sort of like zero value to us, except.
My initial concern was, we have been trying to get rid of land that we own, that we're not using. And there are certain pieces of property we don't want because it has liabilities. But this is none of those.
Right, and I think the lower Merrimack River Advisory Committee would more than likely prefer the town head ownership than anybody else, just so that.
Good point.
Something doesn't get dumped on there inadvertently or whatever. So I would move to, move to accept the donation of the land as Tax Map 6E008 to the town of Merrimack pursuant to RSA 31:95-E and Charter Article 8-15, and authorize the town manager to sign any documents necessary.
Motion made by Tom Kinnick, seconded by Barbara Healy. Any other discussion?
Certainly open for other discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I've expressed any concern I had, but it really is not a concern. I think it's just something people need to know that we needed to consider all concerns and. Okay, saying none, let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed? Saying none, six, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, the minutes of December 21st. Town Council meeting minutes, Thursday, December 21st. Okay, any changes that people see, first of all? Saying none. Somebody want to make a motion? Whoa. I'll do that last time, I'm sorry, Nancy.
No, and I'm just, on page two of seven, line 49. I'm just trying to figure it, it may be fine. It talks about the House bill that I filed relative to kidney cancer incidents that we have here and the kidney cancer phase three feasibility study. And I did say that what I wanted was of, my goal for the bill was to have a full epidemiological health study, but that's really a phase four study, and the kidney cancer part is phase three. So I think, I don't know if, if, it says it relates to a full epidemiological health study. It doesn't really. 614 relates merely to the phase three kidney cancer feasibility study, which is the precursor to, so we can get that full. And so I don't know if that, you read, if you're reading that, does that, does that say that to you? Or does it give you the impression that this bill will make it a full epidemiological health study? Because if that's the case, then we probably shouldn't.
It says it relates to a full epidemiological health study, unless you want to just specify and say, what did you say, the stage three?
It's a, it's a, yeah, a phase three.
Okay, well, it relates to a phase three.
Kidney cancer feasibility study.
There you go. And you can finish it, based on health concerns and exposure to PFAS.
Yeah.
Right? So that meant a full epidemiological health study. Does that make sense, Paul?
Just so I have it, that it relates to a phase three kidney cancer study for community-based.
For the community based on health concerns and exposure to PFAS.
Okay, it's actually based on our 42% higher kidney cancer rate than any other place in New Hampshire. So it's, I'll, let's see, she wanted to share a piece of legislation that, that will, I would think, just the easiest way to say it, House Bill 614, which will appropriate $500,000 to fund a phase three kidney cancer feasibility study based upon kidney cancer, a 42% kidney cancer exceed in the Merrimack community, period.
Do you want to write it out for him, maybe?
I don't think I can say it again.
I was going to, well, it's, I'm telling, I just, my, sorry. Sorry, Becky, please forgive me, but I just put my note, Becky.
Yeah.
Watch, watch the, watch YouTube on this.
My only question is.
Your next sentence talks about $500,000 was allocated, so on the top of the next page.
Right.
Yeah.
So I would suggest you go with what you said.
Yes.
And cross out what's on that second page.
Right, and then at the end of whatever I just said. I would then say DHHS has been, has entered into a contracted agreement with Dartmouth College to complete this study.
There you go.
And then the last sentence is she will have more information.
She can take it.
Thank you.
Good job.
Sorry, Becky. But actually, I think that we finalized it.
You can tell her tomorrow.
Any other changes or corrections? Yeah, I understand the motion to accept as revised.
So moved.
Second.
Barbara Healy made the motion, and Barbara Healy and Nancy Murphy, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, six, zero, zero. Okay, comments from the press? Do we have to have that in?
Sure, Robert's rules.
We'll think about it later, but it's like.
Move to remove the comments from the press.
There was a day, just.
That the press would be here and would actually make comments.
But we had a local newspaper, and we had the local newspaper.
And they would show up.
And they would show up, yeah. Comments from the public, saying none. Comments from the council?
Nance, I'll add, one of the young people in Merrimack, CJ Fracano, will be receiving, he had just become an Eagle Scout, so his court of honor is this weekend. He would love for the town council to be there. He's reached out to me a few times, so if any of you can make it, I'm sure he would love that.
Where is it again?
It is at Camp.
Carpenter?
Yes. Camp Carpenter at 1:00 PM. At 1:00 PM on the 13th.
And Camp Carpenter is in Manchester?
Yes.
Somewhere?
Yes, it's in Manchester.
I was going to check later. Thank you, Mackenzie.
It's on GPS, okay.
Anything else? No, motion to adjourn? Barbara Healy, seconded by Tom Kinnick. All those in favor say aye. Anybody dare oppose? No, six, zero, zero. Thank you, good night.